All right, I'd like to go ahead and call or re-adjourn the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And I'll turn it over to Mayor Leonard to-
Well, I didn't bring my little hammer, but I would like to re-adjourn our City Council meeting.
All right, first item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment cards that were submitted? Anyone wishing to address either council or both councils, or anything that's not agendized? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move into written communications presentation by K O A consultant regarding traffic study and Caltrans improvements at the Bear Valley Road Interstate 15 interchange. Doug?
Honorable mayors and council, I first want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to finally make this meeting go down today. We have what I'm promised is a couple of brief presentations, some PowerPoint presentations, one by one of our city engineers, Stefan Longoria, and another by our consultant here today, followed by the opportunity to ask some questions. So, without going any further, I'll see if we have our PowerPoint ready. And I'll turn it over to Stefan.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, honorable mayors and council members. As you all know, Bear Valley is a very congested street with problems. This traffic study was aimed to try and mitigate some of them. We wanted to, well, before we, both cities hired an independent traffic consultant, K O A. The purpose of that was to model various options to improve traffic flows on Bear Valley Road. And then we would also want to justify-
Could I ask you to just lift your microphone up straight? It goes back where people in the back can hear it a lot easier that way.
Is that better? Yes, thank you, Steph, thank you. All right, we wanted to model various options for improving traffic flows on Bear Valley Road and also justify a possible eight-week pilot project based on the consultant's recommendations. We met three times. First was October 27th, was a kickoff meeting between both city staff and consultant and the consultant to discuss the project scope and modeling scenarios. January 13th was the second meeting. It was just the mayor, city managers, and city staff. It was informational meeting, informational meeting and to introduce Caltrans's offer. And then the final meeting was February 16th. And that was the city manager, city staff with the consultant. And they presented traffic model simulations and the results. The first Phase A is a pilot project. It consisted of a traffic study already performed by the consultant. They modeled the various turning movements. And then we're looking at the eight-week pilot project would begin shortly. This would be at a minimal cost to both cities financially. After that, or in conjunction with that, we want to do a Phase B, which would be adding a new northbound loop on ramp. This would eliminate turning movements across Bear Valley Road. Caltrans also is willing to provide $1 million towards the construction and they would also through the design, environmental, and construction management. This would require $300,000 from each city. Phase B would be a little more extensive. This would be realigning the northbound on and off-ramp about 300 feet west. This would increase the distance between signals on Bear Valley Road. It would improve the flows on Bear Valley Road and reduce backup on I-15, which is what Caltrans's main goal was. This would require 1.7 million from each city for the construction. And then we would also fund construction as funds become available over the next years. The purpose for today's meeting is to ensure both councils receive the same information. We'll have the opportunity to hear the neighboring cities' comments and issues firsthand. Provide a forum for discussion between city councils and- and then also we can ask, answer the questions if the potential benefits outweigh any inconveniences or costs to the citizens of both cities. As far as direction or consensus on next steps, we'd want to look for, you know, public outreach in the near future and then whether or not to commence with Phase A and B. And now I'm going to introduce Ben Chan with K O A.
Hello, hello, Mike Littlebit, good afternoon. Honorable mayors and council members, my name is Benjamin Chan with K O A Corporation. Let me see if I know how to do this. Okay. Quickly, let me discuss a little bit about the study area. There are three locations where we're going to study. The first one is the off-ramp, the northbound on and off-ramp, and then Mariposa and Cottonwood. If one look at Mariposa and Bear Valley, you see a lot of problems there because you have a lot of heavy turning movement. You have a heavy northbound turning movement, left turn, and then you have a heavy southbound. You have a heavy east and westbound, okay? That in itself is what we call a congestion bottleneck location. Coupled with that, you have a very close proximity to the northbound ramps. That will compound the problem much further because people getting off the freeway try to get, go north of Mariposa, they weave into the left turn lane. And then now you have a weaving problem and that causes a lot of disruptions. So, and what are we going to do about it? Okay, so. The first thing we did was that after the first kickoff meeting, we decided to order new counts. Some of the counts that we had was back in 2008. It may not reflect the current traffic condition, so we ordered our new counts. A M, midday, and P M, the counts also consist of trucks, okay? And there you go, you have the existing A M, existing midday, existing P M. As you can see, in the A M, you have a heavier eastbound also for some reason. And then you have a heavy eastbound in the P M as well. If you look at it at Mariposa, and then of course the arrow show the turning movement, the left going north or going south. Three alternatives were decided, okay? What we don't, didn't show here was there was another alternative that we discussed in the first kickoff meeting. That alternative involved actually stopping the through traffic from Mariposa crossing Bear Valley Road. That was really a drastic, drastic alternative, which after two or three minutes of discussion, we said, wow, I don't think anybody would go along with that. So, we dropped that alternative right away. So, now we leave, we're left with three alternatives, okay? And then we use a model, what we call a single model, is a traffic simulation model, to look at the impact of what we plan to do, okay? So, a part of this is to do what? Is to do, look at existing, where we have the counts. And the second alternative was to restrict the eastbound left turn and westbound left turn at Mariposa, okay? And then we volume to volumes primarily to Cottonwood. So, essentially, what we're doing is that we divert traffic. All the weaving and all the disruption at Mariposa, we diverted down to Cottonwood, okay? Which is about more than a quarter miles away from Mariposa, okay? So, alternative B, or two, I'm sorry, is restrict left turn at all movement at Mariposa. Does not, the south, the east, and west, they all be restricted, okay? So, where do they go on northbound at Mariposa? Again, we send them over to Cottonwood. As you can see, on Cottonwood, you see a lot heavier volumes now for the eight, for the northbound and southbound because we diverted traffic, what used to be on Mariposa, the left turn, now they've had to turn left at Cottonwood, okay? So, the third alternative is something we added on later on. It's looking what happens if there's additional ramp or additional modification to the ramp at I-15 northbound with no changes to Mariposa at all, okay? So, these are three alternatives that we analyzed, that we entered into a software model, and we looked at the impact of it. There you go, and there are the impacts, okay? A M period, existing, let's look at the speed. I think we all know what the speed is like, it's six miles per hour. From Cottonwood to the ramp, on average, the speed is about six miles per hour in both directions, okay? You can see this is almost like stop and go traffic. I believe that most, those who commute on Bear Valley will probably experience that. Let's look at alternative. For alternative one, with no eastbound and westbound left turn at Mariposa, there's substantial increase of speed. Now, we're talking about from six miles per hour to 14 miles per hour. It's more than double the average speed, okay? And then what happened with no left turn at Mariposa? Ah, wow, with how we could probably increase a little bit more, but no, there's no increase at all based on our model that we simulate. The speed is still remain 14 miles per hour, okay? And then we look at alternative three with additional ramp. The speed increased by one miles per hour more, okay? Between three and one and two. That's for A M period. For P M period, existing is really bad, actually. Four miles per hour. One can actually walk faster than, you know, just sitting in the car at that rate. So, what's alternative one would give us? They give us 10 miles per hour. But still better, I mean, it's almost double than what we currently experience, okay? For alternative two, it's actually not as good as alternative one, okay? Because it's only eight miles per hour. I think one of the reasons is that because Cottonwood now have a lot more vehicle making turns. So, now instead of the problem at Mariposa, we start to bring it down to Cottonwood. So, I think the, you know, the software model captured that. And then to the third alternative, there's no change at all at the ramp I-15. But in summary, what it says is that the problem actually, the intersection of Mariposa and Bear Valley in itself is a problem location where you have a lot of conflicting movement with heavy left turns, okay? So, our recommendation in summary is that after looking at all the alternative, except alternative three, of course, we don't have the I-15 ramp changes yet, is to recommend go ahead with no eastbound left turn and westbound left turn as a pilot study for eight weeks to see how it's like. To see if it actually improved speed as shown by the model. So, we're going to do the impact analysis for eight weeks during that time and see what's going to happen. Is it a lot better than what we show or is it not better what we showed, okay? So, that's what our recommendation from the analysis was. Let me turn to the next. So, these are the two Caltrans alternatives. The one to the left, it shows the, all the, like, you know, grade age Cadillac improvement. That will cost $5 million. I think Stefan has touched upon it about the city contribution and what Caltrans would do. And this is what it looks like. It actually moves the ramps away from Mariposa, which is a very good thing, okay? And then alternative B, of course, is much lower cost. Essentially, you have the same problem. You should have the ramps very close to Mariposa. The only difference is that at the ramp, you don't have a left turn going north anymore. You just have a hook ramp for the eastbound turn. So, in summary, I mean, these are the two Caltrans alternatives that's proposed for Bear Valley. So, next thing is to conclude my presentation and open up the questions for everybody.
Yeah, I had one. I don't know if I misunderstood you or you were saying that on the A M with some improvements, we would gain one mile per hour on Bear Valley Road?
What I'm saying is that between the alternative three, if you look at alternative three is 15 miles per hour. Alternative one and two are 14 miles. So, by doing modification to the ramp in the A M, you gain one miles per hour.
We're kicking a lot of money out if we go ahead with this to gain one mile per hour? It's not easing the congestion at all then. I mean, it appears to me that no matter what we do, we're still going to have a congestion problem at those intersections.
That's true, that is true, Mayor. I, and that's what we recommend that the most prudent thing to do is to try it out. The pilot projects is at Mariposa and Bear Valley Road. Because that intersection by itself is the problem.
The left-hand turn lane.
Yes, left-hand turn lanes. So, by restricting the left-hand turn on Bear Valley only, we would see significant improvement to the operation on Bear Valley.
I would have to ask the City of Victorville, have you talked to your businesses that are going to be affected? Or, you know, I mean, it's more of effect to your city than ours as far as the left-hand turn lanes.
Can I interject one thing on that, Mike? The number three would not include Mariposa at all though. So, Mariposa would stay the same. That's just the impact. So, you would see the average speed of 15 with only the Caltrans ramp improvements.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Doug, clarify that point.
Quick question. On the last page, on the last slide you actually had up there, I'm a little confused. On the-
Caltrans?
On the photo or picture on the right.
On the right, good.
How does somebody on I-15 northbound, how do they get off of Bear Valley? Do they still get, is the on-ramp or off-ramp stay the same? Do you just put in the loop to go north?
Yes, it stays the same.
Is that pretty much all it is?
Yes.
How does that, I mean, obviously that's cheaper, but how does that affect the congestion?
It leaves the left-hand turn.
Yes. Currently, there's, you have to make a left turn, there's a protected left-hand turn at the ramp at Bear Valley. So, by doing the hook ramp, you take away the left turn. That's right. Thank you, council member, for talking.
Okay, I see.
Perfume on off-ramp. Lot like it does at Tom Dale Road.
Exactly. Goes up to Green Tree.
Yes, I follow you, councilman, kind of. No, we did not. I mean, our scope really just focused on Bear Valley. And I mean, originally, our scope was to look at the impact on Bear Valley itself. And then after this kickoff meeting, the scope can expand it a bit more, so maybe.
If I could, Councilman Member Kennedy, that was actually discussed with Caltrans quite a few years ago. That won't make their stacking requirements. Right now, they have a problem with stacking on the ramp itself by taking it off to the frontage road. You actually reduce substantially the stacking distance of the off-ramp. And by taking it to Mariposa, there's not enough room to stack cars on the ramp to get them off the freeway. So, it actually would make the matter worse as far as stacking cars on the freeway.
So, good looking, yeah.
The million six is on the right, it's just a loop. And then the 3.4 million would be moving the off-ramps 300 foot, the on and off-ramp northbound 300 foot west. The loop would, it'd be 5 million total. If you do the one on the left, 5 million total. You do the one on the right, 1.6.
So, in conjunction with the 1.6, still have, or would you eliminate the left-hand turn on the Mariposa?
That's the recommendation, is to study, to do a pilot project on that right now. You're only eliminating one turning movement there going northbound with the loop. It'll help, but as you saw from the one figure, you're going to get the most bang for your buck from eliminating-
The left and right-hand turns off of Bear Valley on the Mariposa are almost the same except for P M. You know, now we have, I think, you know, the existing numbers are just about the same compared, you know, left and right turns on the Mariposa, if I'm looking at this. Right, the existing A M right-hand turns are 239 and the existing left-hand turns are 242 in the A M. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, never mind. I was looking at the on-ramp to the freeway. Okay. Forty-three and 168, okay, sorry.
Okay, my turn. On the scenarios, on one of your graphs here, I just got the paper here. But it says delayed vehicles slash hours. Does that mean that alternative three is 205 vehicles per hour? Or is that vehicles are delayed 205 hours?
Oh, no, that's actually, there's a typo in there, pass him on with Smith. It's actually, it should be a second per vehicle. And somehow we, when we proofread it, we overlook that fact. Delay is actually, is quite difficult for me to explain because what it does is that when you talk about delay in a technical term of traffic engineering, they talk about second per vehicle. So, you have once, two seconds of vehicle delay. I mean, that vehicle is actually delayed by two seconds over an operating speed of 30 miles per hour normally, okay? So, in this case, what it does is that it tells you on Bear Valley, we have a 35 miles or 40 miles per hour. And now that has been shrinking down to four miles per hour. So, the delays now is hundreds of seconds per vehicle, okay? So, that is an average number. And I hope you don't go out tomorrow or, you know, next week with a stopwatch and say, okay, okay, I want to see this guy, does he know what he's talking about and use a stopwatch? No, this is just an average of the platoon of cars, not one single car, okay? So, I just hope that I'm clear on that point. This, and that's good for us, if we look at the trends, we look at comparison. And this is just best use for comparison for different alternatives. So, you have one alternative which is a lot better than others. That's useful comparison.
Because then the other part, you go to the percentage difference to existing, I assume that's what that means for abbreviations. And they're all negative, anywhere from 54.70 to 68.
That's good. We like to see negative 100, that means that you eliminate all your delays.
Or at least a 50% plus when it's a negative.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay.
So, essentially, you reduce it by half, your delay.
Okay, and one more-
Minus 50%. Unfortunately, when we look, I think we look at something positive, a positive effect. And this scenario, what it shows you is a negative, which is a good number for delay.
Clarify that for the public then. And then we got a Phase A and a Phase B, and that's what, two different, you know, donated phases. But on the Phase Two, which is the red line off-ramp coming in, and there probably is a picture to your left here. Will the existing Mariposa coming up to Bear Valley stay there too? So, there'll be two exits, or are you going to eliminate and just have one exit? Just one. Because that's it, another one. What if we just, if you did an existing off-ramp in the red that I have here, only left-hand turns going back up over the freeway going west, and keep the existing Mariposa coming to where it is, and you can only go right?
Oh, oh.
I'm not an engineer, so.
Really confuse the people.
Got in the wrong way, you had to go-
Couldn't know what off-ramp to get on.
If you borrow my map from last meeting, it'll help.
And I'm sure there's probably some problems with-
Caltrans on it.
Caltrans on that kind of an operation, off-ramps.
You go that way or you go that way, you know?
Can you repeat the question again? I just got the-
Okay, you got the paper. If you kept that existing Mariposa exiting where it does right now, but you put in the new red line, which is on here, you could only make a left-hand turn going west on Bear Valley, and you kept the existing one, you could only turn right on Mariposa? Does that figure anybody's equation or given thoughts or?
Do we have anybody from Caltrans here? Because I think that they would have to answer that question. I don't know that you-
We don't want anybody here from Caltrans.
Actually, I worked for them for four months, but, and I stayed with the Holiday Inn Express. I believe if I understand it correctly, you're now adding an extra signal.
No, just an extra off-ramp.
Well, but with an off-ramp, you need a signal.
Ah, you do.
But you, so now you've added, but you're going to have another existing signal with this Phase Two? There's no signal? Well, you're eliminating, you're moving the existing ramp signal 300 feet to the west. By keeping two ramps, you're now adding an extra signal, which is just compounding.
I thought there was going to be two in there already, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Got one there.
If I may ask a little bit, I think what we're looking at is just a plan view. We're not looking at really at the grade itself. If you look at it, I don't think the two grade may meet. The existing and proposed may not even meet, okay? So, because if you look at it, the red lines, it's a lot shorter. So, in order for, for just to meet the existing street, the grade itself has to be different than the existing ramp. That's something that we may not actually see it on a plan view because the plan would just show everything flat. But in reality, because the ramp's actually coming up, so the grade may be different itself, okay? So, that's some of the details that, you know, it may not show on the diagram.
Is it right to conclude that by just eliminating those two left turns off of Mariposa, put your north to south bound on Mariposa, cannot go east or west? By doing that, we're getting a huge improvement in traffic flow? Does that make sense?
Yeah, but just be clear, the left turn movements that are being eliminated are off of Bear Valley, onto Mariposa. So, the left-hand turns, when you're on Bear Valley, getting onto Mariposa.
Okay, when you exit the ramp and you want to go left on Mariposa, can't do it anymore.
You go to Cottonwood, you make a left in Cottonwood.
Can't anybody make a left turn onto Mariposa? You want to eliminate that left turn completely? All four left turns will be eliminated?
No, no, just two, just two on Bear Valley. Just on Bear Valley. Eastbound Bear Valley going north, westbound Bear Valley going south. Just on Bear Valley itself. Nothing, we're not touching Mariposa at all. We're not recommending touching Mariposa at all, just Bear Valley.
From Bear Valley Road, you're not going to be able to get onto Mariposa either direction.
It's going to impact-
You can usually set on to right turn.
Right turns, but no left turns.
I thought one of your ideas was to eliminate the, if I'm southbound on Mariposa, eliminate that left turn onto Bear Valley.
No.
No.
That's not being eliminated.
That was one of the alternatives that we analyzed and we turned, it's turned out that it did not really provide much improvement at all. So, we said, okay, if it's not, there's no point of restricting the movement.
I have a question. It was quite a few years ago. I can't remember whether it was when I was on the Sandbag Board or the League of California Cities, but there was an interesting traffic modeling that went on and it, I think the project was in San Francisco. But they found some blind spots in traffic flows by changing design features. And it didn't come out in the mathematical analysis. I'm assuming you used the mathematical analysis on your tables here. But have you, do you understand the program that's available where they could, you could plug this, these features in and then put any variables in to see if there's a blind spot here or delays that you don't see happening? Have you applied this picture to that type of a project scenario?
Yes, we did.
Do you know what I mean by talking about?
Uh-huh, we, we actually do, we use actually two separate model, okay? We use one model primarily to simulate what the traffic is like. We have another model to actually look at the different mode, how it's behaved, like trucks, cars, buses and others. You don't have a lot of buses here, but that model actually looked at how the weaving of traffic is like. We look at those as well. And this one is fairly clear, there's not, there's no blind spot. There's not, there's not acute angle of turning where you have, sometimes you overlook the fact that you have an acute angle coming in and joining, merging the traffic. Those are the red flags that you have to be careful about. But in this case, it's very clear cut. It's a T, it's like, you know, a four-legged 90 degrees angle intersection. So, it's very clear cut. We didn't see any of those in our analysis at all. That you have some blind spot, you have something that we, you know, did not capture. We did not find that at all.
Well, you can apply that statistic to a specific incident, one truck, one car combination, and then multiply it out, but that still doesn't- But that still doesn't give you the total picture. What if you have a, a two trucks, uh, eighteen wheeler coming through or something in a blind spot? And then you have a car merging? The program that I saw dealt with all the different variables. You could sit there and almost put up an infinite number of combinations. And all of a sudden, oh, wow, you know, at eight in the morning, we're getting all these eighteen whealers and they're merging into this lane? And it puts this blind spot into lane number two? I, that was the information that came out of the, the modeling from the program that was not the ma- that shown as the mathematical approach.
We, uh, we didn't bring it today. We actually, um, uh, discussed with the city, uh, a- actually using that model uh, to show to the council member and honorable ma- mayors of how that, um, you know, the weaving, visually, you look in, are, are those weaving back and forth between vehicles? We actually using that model and applied, uh, to this, uh, what you call it, to this study. But we did not put in every data in there, because, uh, the data are very time-consuming. To look at, like you said, uh, council member Rothschild, is that, you know, every single town, every single truck, you had to put it in. You had to put in, uh, your, your buses, you know, you need to know where your buses stop, because it looked at microscopic level. What we simulate is looking at macroscopic level, uh-huh. So there, there, there's a little bit of difference on what you said and, and what, what we end up doing. Uh-huh, but we did look at that model itself. We did not find anything that would jump out at us and ask the city, okay, well, there's something in here that you should further analyze. We didn't, we did see that, uh-huh. But that's a very nice model that we, we wish we could bring it out and show it to you.
Aaron. Uh, I don't know, Mylan? Yeah, I guess I'm on. What else do you have? Because I'm not real enamored, quite frankly, with, uh, no left turn. Because I think it would really impact, uh, some of our businesses, and it would severely impact, really severely impact Victorville's businesses on Mariposa. You've got several businesses, uh, in there that are impulse businesses. And impulse businesses, uh, depend on convenience. And driving down to Cottonwood, making a left and coming back is not convenient. I mean, if I was, uh, if you're looking at the revenue side, you're, you're going to cost those businesses significant dollars. I can't imagine how McDonald's is going to feel, or Kentucky Fried Chicken, uh-
Or AM PM.
Or AM PM, or any of those places, how they're going to feel about this. I can tell you, in a nutshell, this is going to cost you a lot of money. So, uh, do you have anything else?
Uh, well, there's another slot of that, if I can piggyback, Russ.
Please do.
If you're westbound on Bear Valley, and for whatever reason, you don't figure out that you're supposed to turn on Cottonwood to go south on Mariposa? The I before E, except after C exchange there? And you get to Mariposa, and you haven't figured out, now you can't turn left? You got to go over the bridge, figure out somewhere in that nightmare of a intersection to turn around, and then come back. Most of the time, I think people are going to go the heck with it, and they're going to move on. I mean, at least you have, if you're eastbound and you go to, to Mariposa and you figure out, okay, I can't go left? You have the chance to go to Cottonwood. Going west, you got to go over the bridge. That doesn't work.
I don't think people are going to like being lost in Victorville on the other side of the freeway.
Well, that whole intersection, east or west rather of that, of the freeway, is bad.
And interject, I think, my name is Mujeeb Ahmed. I'm also working with Ben on this one. I think that, uh, change is always difficult, you know? Uh, I think that what, what we are looking at is a pilot project for that reason. We certainly definitely see that there are two issues. One is traffic and the other is the businesses. We feel that right now at four miles per hour, that there are people that are avoiding the corridor. That if this has a little smoother operation, it'll attract people that will benefit the businesses as well. Uh, there will be impact on the businesses, obviously, that is taking a left turn movement there. But, uh, the question of traffic that's going westbound and misses a left turn at Mariposa will keep going is true. The implementation of this pilot project with proper signing and proper, um, uh, advertising of the project and informing the public ahead would definitely be necessary so that people can start preparing, uh, themselves when they are approaching the intersection. If the proper sign is there, they could go ahead and make a turn on Cottonwood before they get to Mariposa, and then turn around and get to that intersection. Uh, because that access is available, uh, for people if they are going, um, uh, westbound. So there are obviously changes. It's going to be something that people have to get used to, and the impacts are going to be there. But we feel that once the traffic starts moving better, uh, perhaps the people will see the benefit of it. And actually, the businesses may also see the, see the benefit of that. But again, I can't guarantee that. That's just a perception I wanted to share.
In, in all due respect, have you, have you, uh, how often have you driven that? I drive it all the time. And I get news for you, the last thing in the world you're looking for are signs. You're just praying that, uh, you, you know, you're praying that you'll get through it, because it's-
Exactly.
You make it through a lot.
I'm not saying that it's going to be, it's going to be totally, uh, you know, covering all that bases. But, but the, but, but the, but, but what we're dealing with here is one problem that's going to require a solution that has some marginal impacts in other areas. So that's, definitely, it's not what I'm saying is going to go away.
And, and again, sir, I, I don't have a problem with the, the solution, so long as you don't create a worse problem in the process.
Worse problem.
And I think the worst problem in the process is, again, when you've got six lanes? And people zigzagging and, and laying smoke screens? You're, you're, you're not looking for a sign that says you had to turn left to go down Mariposa south, a block back, and oh god, now I got to go over the bridge? That doesn't work. The Cottonwood angle, okay, and maybe businesses are going to be impacted because it's an impulse thing. But that's at least recoverable. Go, do yourself a favor. Go drive down Bear Valley, go west. Forget to turn left on Mariposa and figure out the timeframe it takes you to make the oops turnaround to go south on Mariposa, because now you're coming back east over the bridge. And tell me how much time that takes, because that's going to be horrible.
That's a, that's an excellent point, because it goes, uh, almost, you know, during the midday, there's a hundred cars there. You're right, that's making turn. Yes, absolutely. I'm not-
I mean, if there was a Cottonwood alternative there, like you have for westbound, or eastbound rather?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's inconvenient, but it's doable. That way is really not.
Yeah, that's one of the major impacts, for sure. And then again, because of larger volume, that's how it benefits the traffic. That's why it benefits the true traffic.
What is Bear Valley Road rated at now? I mean, you know, we have D roads and, and I'm sure it's way, way down, but, yeah. Now, if, if, if we did this a, as a trial basis on the left-hand turn lanes, which I think we should try, see what happens. Probably get road out of town, but we can try it. Um, we eliminate the left-hand turn lanes, we, we do the one point six million, uh, improvement. What will that bring the road to? An F or a D? I mean, you know, how much is we going to improve?
I, I, I can't, can't really ask me, uh, stick my neck out on this one, but, um, being an, uh, you know, traffic guy for, for quite a while. What it did do, and I, I hate to say it, I, I'd just be frank, uh, with council member and honorable mayor, is that if you, if, if you, uh, improve the street, um, like, uh, you know, Duck has said, some people avoid Bear Valley because it's such a congested, uh, street right now.
Absolutely, yeah.
But if you improve the street, those people will come back. I mean, it is, it, uh, okay, so, but the thing, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't stop, uh, making improvement to the street. I mean, if there's a solution, uh, to the problem, we should explore it. Uh, but, uh, like I said, I mean, uh, if, if often in that, what we do is instead, instead of making fourteen miles per hour in the morning? That's more attractive to some other people who now driving on some other alternate path, they may come back to Bear Valley. And then you see it in, uh, in increase in, 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 in volumes, okay? I mean, well, yeah, we, I, we cannot control this commuter traffic.
The increased volume, then we're back to the same issue, you know?
Uh-huh, uh, we, we may go back, but I don't know if we go back to the, uh, the same level, or we go back to a bit worse, but we don't know at this point. And that's, that's what we call it, like, uh, pilot projects. We like to explore that. We're going to drive it and, and see how the comput- uh, commuters, uh, react to this change. Would that be, like, you know, council, uh, member Holland said, God, people on westbound, they miss it. And now, geez, now, now it's a worse problem. Now we create another monster here. It's worth, and then if not, then we, we, we evaluate, we can take it out. I mean, there's not a known right now. We, we're looking at just the number itself. But in, actually, we don't know as qualitatively, uh, what, what's going to happen, uh-huh, okay? But what we do know is that, though, there's a lot of traffic on Bear Valley right now. And the improvement, from the, you know, from four miles per hour to ten miles per hour in the afternoon, is something that we should look at, and we should try it out. And hopefully, that, that will bring some improvement to the area.
I, I don't have any problem with it, you know, with this pilot program. Let's try and see what happens. But I think if we do this, back further on Bear Valley someplace, say down around, uh, Home Depot in that area, we need to put a, a, a sign up alerting the people that there's no left turn at Mariposa and Bear Valley. And maybe, maybe on the off ramp, I, I don't know if we can do that without Caltrans buzzing, but, but also put a, a sign that, that alerts people that there's no left turns on the Mariposa. Don't have this issue that Bill was talking about.
Well, and just real quick, seems like the majority of the congestion, and, and maybe I'm missing this, but it seems like the majority would be for eastbound traffic trying to come up over the bridge. And like you say, the zigzagging, trying to get in the left turn either from the off ramp? Or the ones that are still coming over the bridge and they're trying to mesh with the folks who got off on the off ramp? That seems to be the lion's share of the issue. I, I think the westbound traffic coming across Bear Valley to try and get across the bridge to the mall in Victorville itself? It backs up just simply because of volume. I don't think it has anything to do with people making a left to go south on Mariposa.
It does, because-
Does it?
Because then they could leave, if they, if, if that left-hand turn lane is not there, you can leave the light green longer.
Yeah, it's, uh, okay. It's a shared-
So it's a timing issue with the signal. Is that, is that what you're saying? I, I agree with you. People are going to get-
Oh, they're going to get benched.
They're going to go, and, and do we have to, do you have to do eight weeks? Can you do it in four?
Uh, it's difficult to, uh, really, um, analyze the impact, uh, for weeks. Uh, we'd like to do it longer, so we actually have a better data to analyze, whether in four weeks, uh, data, um. So that's something that, I think the city would better answer that question. But I think eight weeks, normally, when, when, when we do with other cities for alternatives, we normally do it eight weeks. Uh, unless, unless we, we missed something so drastic that we had to cut it short. Otherwise, I think, uh, eight weeks, let people get used to it first. If you go four weeks, you may not get used to it, and then next thing we know, whether some people like it, some people don't? We already take it out, uh, because we don't have enough data to actually reach a, a, a conclusion.
I can tell you one thing, in four weeks, the merchants will be able to tell you, uh, what their volume is. I can, I guarantee that. They'll know, they'll know what their sales are before and after, and they're not going to be, uh, my gosh, uh, this, I think this is going to be a horror.
Well, council member, maybe perhaps someone from Hesperia can tell us why Victorville lost Carl's Jr.? Cause it was for that very reason, people couldn't churn left on, on the Mariposa, Bear Valley. So they were losing volume for that, and now they've got, what, double, triple their volume?
Who doesn't cross Bear Valley?
Who doesn't cross Bear Valley to have Carl's Jr.?
Other than that, I, I, I want to, I want to point that out.
Are we to the general discussion phase yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good enough.
Um, Mr. Protegris may want to near the mic here. I got, my wife is my sounding board on a lot of these issues, so. Uh, I read in the paper about this issue. I really didn't have any information until I got here. Um, the political ramifications of this thing is where Hesperia, our constituents are, Hesperia, tax money comes from Hesperia. And the question I always ask is, how does this benefit or affect Hesperia? Um, I've lived up here thirty-something years. Um, I mean, preface it with a statement, uh, I was talking to the folks from Lamar on the, on the bulletin board, the billboards? That, uh, we reached an agreement with them. They were going to take some down and then put up an electronic one. And I was talking to one of their salesmen, and I said, if it's anywhere north of Main Street on the fifteen freeway? You, you've just, um, you passed Main Street, Hesperia, and we're not going to, nobody's going to advertise on your billboard because you already passed it. This off ramp on the Bear Valley Road at the fifteen northbound, is, this is a regional issue. If you pass Main Street, Hesperia, and you get off at Bear Valley, you're not going home. You're coming either to Victorville, you're going to Adelanto, you're going to Spring Valley Lake, and you're going to Apple Valley. It's a regional issue. All those commuters, they're not going home to Hesperia. They would get off at Main Street, and that's the issue. We have, um, political priorities in Hesperia on our off ramps. The Ranchero Road off ramp, when we get the underpass done, we're going to have a lot of traffic getting off at Oak Hill Road. So we're going to shoot down to, to Ranchero and then, and then hit east. Um, right now?
Yeah.
Whatever it may be, there's, there's, um, I read in the paper, the split in the funding, and I'm thinking to myself, uh, there's a lot of other people here that tend us that way more than people of Hesperia. We don't, if you, if you're getting off at Bear Valley on a northbound freeway, you've already passed Hesperia. Those folks, and, and, and that's the issue. Our constituents, when we go back, um, like my wife, I'll, I'll phrase it nicely, are you nuts? Are you crazy? Um, what about the stuff in Hesperia? What about synchronizing the Main Street lights? What about Oak Hill Road? What about the Ranchero off ramp? All the rest of it? Um, I'll, I'll acknowledge and recognize that's the worst traffic in this valley, at Bear Valley and that, that fifteen freeway. But it is not a split between Victorville and Hesperia by any means to alleviate that, that, those issues out there. And, um, for us to, I hope this comes up in Hesperia, so our constituents can tell us what they think of it. I got a pretty good idea how that's going to come out, but, um, this particular issue, um, it's, it's a regional issue, in my opinion. It's not just between the two cities here. And based on my thirty-something years of, 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 of living up here? Adelanto, Victorville, Spring Valley Lake, and Apple Valley all have more people getting off on that off ramp than Hesperia on any given day at any given time. Uh, those folks need to be brought into the mix, especially Apple Valley. That's the main artery to get to Apple Valley, unless you're going to keep going north all the way down to the other roads that cut through Victorville, uh, one way or another. It's a regional issue. It's not just between the two cities. And proportionally, uh, it's not a fifty-fifty split. I'm sorry, uh, I don't see that at all. I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to make you stand up.
Oh, I will, but it, since I did, I'll, I'll get it.
Well, maybe, maybe you can, maybe you can explain, uh, the, the dynamic of this.
Well, you are correct, it's a regional issue. I mean, if you're located, probably the bulk of the people getting off are probably going to Apple Valley. The, the point of the matter is, though, it's a regional issue, but the issue is in Hesperia and Victorville. Uh, any regional issue, you have an arterial, it still falls to the responsibility of the two jurisdictions, or any jurisdiction. It was all in our area. I mean, we have a, uh, we're putting a signal at Rock Springs and Arrowhead Lake Road. Well, who are the bulk of the people that are going to be using that signal? People going across the way to Apple Valley in the county. But we're putting a signal in, so you, you always have these, these issues that jurisdictions have to provide. In many cases, it's really benefiting people outside the jurisdiction. Um, you know, I don't know the exact number of residents that actually get off of Bear Valley. There are people that live along Sequoia, along that area that probably do use Bear Valley. But if we get more traffic off of Bear Valley and along Bear Valley Road, more traffic using Bear Valley, we have businesses there. We have sales tax. The city of Hesperia will benefit the more people use, because they will get off, they will use the gas stations, they will use convenience stores. And, I mean, the fact of the matter is, a lot of people on Bear Valley are located on Bear Valley because of the traffic. So if you could get more traffic off, uh, it would stand to reason that, uh, that would benefit the citizens of Hesperia by sales tax. Uh, and again, as I mentioned, there are people that actually use Bear Valley for Hesperia. The, the last thing I want to point out is, the city did this, uh, probably about something similar, not as large, about six or seven years ago. If you recall, the, um, Third Street and Main Street and C Avenue, that whole intersection at Third, Second, First, and, um, Main Street? A lot of that congestion. And we did something that's still in place today, and that is restricting turn movements. We restricted the turn movements at, uh, Second Avenue, um, made people go to Third. We had the business center there that was very concerned about impacts. Uh, we worked with them, we put up signage. It was hard for them for a while, but, um, after about two, three, four months? Things returned to normal, and that's been in place ever since. Now, I'm not saying that this will solve all the problems, but it's something that the city did and looked at and, and basically did an experiment on. In that case, we were lucky and the experiment worked, and it's still in place today. So I think that's what being, that's being asked today. It is a regional problem. Um, we're here today because it's in our jurisdictions. We see some information that provides that it will help traffic flow along Bear Valley Road, and so that point of it, that's- And so that point of it, that's why we're here today to, to look at that pilot program, to at least give it a try and, and see, uh, see if it will address the issues and what will be the impacts to the business community as well as to, um, the other intersections.
Well, and if, and if I could just address, the pilot program is all we're being asked to consider here really today. The other, the other options before us still would have to be figured out anyway. So I think to Councilmember Basaki's points, you know, that's something that myself and, and Mayor Leonard can address with Sandbag and potentially get some of those regional dollars to help us address some of the costs that go to, uh, Phase, uh, I'm sorry, Phase Two, uh, One and, uh, One and Two, the two portions of that, if that, if those two sections have to be phased. Um, because I agree, I don't know that all that should be borne by the two, our two jurisdictions. And I think that will give us some time and, and allow us that we study this. But I also have to agree with Councilmember Bluh. We, we need to reach out, uh, to the businesses, uh, in our community, I think, as well as in your community, in looking at doing something like this, because this will have a, an impact on them and, and we want their buy-in if we're gonna do it.
And, and I think another thing we need to consider, uh, you know, it may be two years, three years, but we have our Ranchero interchange in the works, which is gonna ease traffic on Bear Valley. And we have Nisqually that will ease traffic also. And, and then maybe, maybe once those two interchanges are in and everything is tied together, um, you know, the problem on Bear Valley goes away. And we don't have to do all these no left-hand turn lanes and, and what have you.
I, I was just gonna ask that. If, if we do the no left turns, and then Phase B comes in, and the off-ramps are moved west three hundred feet, at that point, do you need to continue to have no left turns on Mariposa? Or can that be reopened?
Traffic study.
I can't wait again. Is that gonna alleviate that issue?
Uh, and I said, we did not place a lot of emphasis on, on that, because that's a, a Phase B of Caltrans, a subject of funding issues and that. We did not really pay much attention in our modeling, modeling of that. What happened if the ramp is actually moved far away, and then you restrict the turn? Uh, definitely, there's improvement, but how much of improvement, uh, in quantity, quantitatively, uh, numbers, I, I cannot answer you. Uh, but there's definitely, there will be improvement. So by that time, we'll, we, we should be able to make, uh, you know, a real concert decision whether to continue, hopefully, with the left turn, no left turn, or we should open it up, because if other interchange are being built, there will be less, um, burden on Bear Valley. Because right now, you, you know, interchanges are so far away from each other, and not that, uh, a few are far between, and that's what happened.
I mean, we have future plans for, uh, you know, Goshua, uh, somewhere around Monaloa probably, and then maybe down to Eucalyptus. That eventually all those problems are gonna go away. I mean, it'll be years, but the cities have worked on off-ramps. We have plans, I believe, for a loop that would, would go all the way around the valley. So you could get off at wherever the loop's gonna start, say Ranchero, and, and drive all the way around to the far reaches out in Apple Valley and
Back around through Victorville.
Back around and, and back to the fifteen, probably there to, uh, what is it, Falsion Road?
Okay, next agenda.
I mean, we are planning things, uh, and I think a lot of this is just probably a, a Band-Aid for right now, say a quick fix.
Doug, exactly what are you looking for each council to do tonight?
Well, one would be the authorization to move forward with the pilot project, and that would be have staff get together, um, look what type of signage, look at the duration, have some public outreach, you know, do everything upfront to get it going. Um, the second one that was a point I wanted to make is that, uh, Caltrans has offered a million dollars, their, and design, and construction management, and environmental, and we know what we spend on environmental and, and our interchange alone. But, um, that won't be there forever. So if we don't enter into some type of MOU to look to move forward with this, they'll put the money elsewhere. It's just a discretionary fund that, um, they've offered for this interchange. And so I, I would think we would owe it to them to say yea or nay, um, we wanna move forward, we wanna try and find the money, or we don't.
Doug, question. The, the Million Six Project does not involve moving the off-ramp three hundred feet?
Correct.
All it involves is adding a right, a northbound loop to avoid the left turn to the northbound fifteen. Am I right?
That's correct. Caltrans would like to see them both done at the same, they would love to see them both done, but they realize the funding issues. So they're willing to entertain if, if we can help with the first part of it, and you would do substantial grading and elevations to, to help with the next portion that, uh, um, that we would find some future funding to do Phase B two as well. So they're, they're working to phase it in, and that was one of the agreements we had, is that we couldn't, we knew we couldn't come up with two million apiece at this time. So we looked at them to say, "Well, if you let us phase it in, can we do the, the, the loop ramp first and then come back and do, and realign the, uh, northbound on and off-ramps?"
Also, I know Sandbag is looking at some alternate funding for, uh, quality project in our Ranchero interchange, number one and two on the list. Act Bay, Hux, that would free up a lot of money for other projects if, if we get this.
Would there be a, um, assuming there's a consensus to go ahead, um, would Caltrans have a requirement in, in time? You know, or, or would they, would it be flexible? Because money's the issue, and, and that, and banks have mentioned, and, and of course, that takes time too. But the, the, uh, the, the bottom line here is that we have a problem with Bear Valley Road. It affects all of us. And at least if we're moving forward to find some kind of solution for it, the, uh, the study project, you know, that's minimal cost. The other one, it, it's, it's gonna cost some money, but Caltrans is putting up a million dollars. It, it might be, uh, something worth looking at, because like you mentioned, it may not be there for, for a long time. But I think we all need to agree that we need to look at a solution for Bear Valley, or at least agree to, to that. Because not doing that, the problem just continues and gets worse and worse and worse.
Doug, I think I would like some time on that second issue to at least sit down with, um, Sandbag and Caltrans, along with Mayor Leonard, and, uh, see, you know, what we could possibly do to come up with some of those additional dollars. To me, as much as I know it will benefit, um, eastbound, or I'm sorry, yeah, eastbound traffic on Bear Valley Road to put the loop in, that project doesn't make sense unless you're doing the whole thing. So, you know, I agree. I, I agree with Caltrans. I think we need to do the whole thing. Um, but we've gotta figure out a way to be able to fund it and probably do that. I, I just don't know that makes a whole lot of sense.
How long do you think Caltrans would, uh, wait, would, would, would they let us do our left-hand turn study and then, and then talk about their MOU for that one million?
We can, we can go speak with them. I mean, that's something we can ask if, how long that funds would be available for this project, um.
Well, we need to do that. We need to have a consultation. I just don't, I don't think that either of these councils should commit to that tonight.
How much is the, the, uh, study, the eight-week study?
How much was the study we just did?
No, how much is the study that you're proposing?
The eight-week?
Oh, um, we would use staff. We would use city staff on both ends, our striping crews, our signage crews, our signal crews, so it, it would be minimal.
Storm, no, I need...
Maybe some materials.
Comment. Please come forward.
Yeah. And Doug, while you're up, sorry, I don't mind you trying the pilot program as we go along, but I wanna see the impact, I don't see no traffic studies, of the impact it's gonna put on Cottonwood. Because I don't wanna take the ball and punt it further down the road and create another bottleneck a quarter mile, half mile down the road. I don't mind the no-left-hand turn. I see a benefit to Hesperia, because they're gonna come to my side of the city when they can't turn left. They can only turn right, brother, so they're gonna come to my neck of the store, and they're turning around, da-da-da-da-da. So I see a benefit there. But I'd like to see some, you know, the pilot program, see what it does. But I wanna really concentrate on the effect at Cottonwood, because all we're gonna do is punt the ball further down the road.
Part, now, how are we gonna funnel those people? I mean, they can't use the alley. They would have to use, uh, Sequoia or all the way to Eucalyptus.
Doug, uh, Councilmember had a comment, so I wanted to give him.
Just everything's gonna have to be plural now, Mr. Mayors, Mr. Councilmembers, and Council Lady. Um, I've been thinking about this a little bit, and, um, one little question is, is it gonna be a fifty-fifty proposition between Victorville and, uh, Hesperia as far as the cost of this, say this preliminary?
That's a proposal.
The other thing is, I was looking at, um, dip fees. Uh, as I understand it, maybe I'm wrong, but I believe that, um, Walmart is gonna provide dip fees for road improvements between three ninety-five and industrialway in their overall, their, what is it, EIR plan or something like that. Well, I couldn't sum that money be, I was thinking to put into this project here, but then I got thinking a little further, rather than if that money could be used, instead of putting it in this project, put it on the Nisqually Bridge, because I think that's the only thing that's gonna relieve Bear Valley Road. And tell, you know, somebody mentioned they've been here thirty years. We've been here almost thirty years also. Bear Valley Road stopped at Highway fifteen, which was in Route sixty-six. There was nothing past Route sixty-six except dirt, and we used that dirt to get to our, the house that we had. And so we've seen how it's built up. Right now, it's at a point where it's, it's just almost not even worth going across the bridge. And as a lot of the council members know, I've asked to put a gate on the bridge a long time ago. But the thing is, this is nice and ea- easy right now. This is summertime coming up, and your traffic is, as it is. But have you ever been to the mall during Christmas? Or any of those areas? No, we don't, we don't come over here. We go to Target. Well, you probably won't have to go to the mall now. You guys are building malls.
Welcome to come to Hesperia.
But we can come back and we can build our mall up better too. And you'll wanna come back again, but when we get our super Walmart, it's gonna make a big change too. But anyway, that was just a thought. I don't know if those dip fees could be used that way or not, but if they could, maybe that would help you. Thank you.
And, and I think like Brian said, uh, we're gonna be working with Sandbag to see if we can find some alternate funding for, uh, the whole project and get it done right.
Mr. Protegrais. Taking your exercise today. I've never been involved in one of these joint meetings. It's kinda fun, but what's the, uh, what's the protocol on, um, the people in Hesperia, um, getting to, uh, speak on this issue and, um, on, on any of these issues? Do, can we agendize this for the next couple of meetings and have, uh, hear from our constituents there?
Well, this is a, this is a public meeting that was agendized, um, but the council has the full right to agendize it for a future meeting if, if the decision is to hold off for another meeting. Yes. But this was an agendized, uh, public, um, published meeting.
I have a question. Um, I didn't hear the answer to, uh, I don't know, somebody in Hesperia asked if, if we've reached out to our businesses. Have we done that?
Harry Catlin and Mayor Leonard and council members, councilwoman. Uh, the first step in this project was for the staff of the city of Hesperia and the city of Victorville to work together to see what the possibility, what the possibilities are to improve traffic on Bear Valley Road. The consultant was hired particularly and purposely so that it was not a Victorville idea or Hesperia idea, so people would not get the idea that somebody was trying to get an advantage. The whole issue is to improve the traffic. The next step is to present this to either the council members independently or jointly, and we felt that it was in everyone's interest to have the joint meeting, and then the council members can reject it all, uh, and we stop, or if they approve going forward. Then outreach program is an absolute requirement where we notify all the business people that would be affected at that point. Depending upon what happens with the outreach program, there may be such an outcry that either council members or both would call a meeting and say, "Stop." Uh, or it may be that we would continue if everyone's in agreement that at least they should see what this would do. If you go ahead and post the signs, uh, it would require street striping, restriping, no signals. It would require signs down beyond Cottonwood, and I can't recall the street, indicating that Mariposa would be a detour. It would then require signing at, um, Cottonwood with a left turn to access to Mariposa. All of this would have to go into consideration, but all the business people affected, and, and all the business people, would have notification, an explanation, how long the program would last, of the pilot program. And I'm sure that our council members and the Hesperia council members will receive substantial feedback at that point. And I'm sure there's going to be further discussions at both the council levels, and possibly then, as we proceed, if it receives extreme negative reviews, probably another joint meeting to determine whether or not to continue forward or not. So we are moving forward carefully and slowly, uh, full disclosures to all the business people to be affected, uh, before we actually go into it. And then, of course, we realize, as, uh, as Councilmember Bluh pointed out, uh, there's, we're gonna hear from the individuals. We would hope that the pilot program would continue for a period that would be long enough to make a determination of, of conclusions that we could count on. But there's no way of telling, you know, you, you, you very well know that the reality is, if a large, large number of people show up, either the council members and wanna be heard on the issue, they're going to be heard, and it could affect the next step that we take. Uh, we just, we don't know what, 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 what that will occur. The belief by the traffic engineers in studying this is that there's a lot of activities by the drivers in switching lanes to avoid the area because of the congestion. And the belief, the belief is that if you clear up the traffic, then some of the traffic will come back. It, it raises an interesting question. I don't know the council member said, "Well, then you're right back where you started if you had the traffic back." That's something we would have to see and determine. I, the pilot program may even show that. But it's a several-step plan, and, uh, we're, we're really leaning on, jointly, our, our staff members are continually discussing the matter. We're relying very heavily on the consultants, because they are the experts in traffic engineering.
Jim?
Yes.
Is it, is it putting the cart before the horse a little bit to do the study before we reach out to the businesses? Okay, or is that the, is that the plan?
Yeah, the outreach program would go to the business people. They would be alerted, they would be given a time, and, and, yeah, we wouldn't...
And then, and then we would move into the study?
They would have an opportunity to respond prior to, prior to the implementation of an eight-week period? They, we, we would be notifying them. Hopefully, they would, uh, have enough questions to staff and maybe council members. Uh, the intent would be to go ahead with the pilot program, but if there's a huge outcry, we, we can, we can see what happens.
So we're actually doing the outreach beforehand? Okay, alright.
We have to do the outreach to notify. We just won't go in and close the streets and put up the traffic and say, "Guess what, you're..."
So on Monday in the Rose Bowl, it's closed. Yeah, no kidding.
Uh, true. Well, yes, there is an outreach as a part of the requirement to complete this, uh, Councilmember Bluh. Uh, we would not do it with, without prior notification. And I'm not sure what the time would be, but they have the guidelines on the time period of the notification, and probably a thirty-day notice or something to that effect. But it would require a lot of, the determination of the joint councils is to move ahead. Uh, our staff people would move ahead immediately because a lot of detour signs, restriping, all the planning, the traffic engineering on that, and setting up the signs, and how far back we go would have to, we would start that immediately.
Is there a red light camera at any of these intersections that are affected?
Yes, there is. Answer that. I don't know. There, there is, there is one at Mariposa, or there was. I don't know if it's still there, but there was. Mariposa? Uh, I suppose Mariposa. I, I'm not sure where they're located.
Okay. Um, I have one more question for the consultant.
Okay.
Benjamin or whoever's brave, brave. Okay, an unintended consequence. Seems to me if we're gonna route all the eastbound folks to make a turn on Cottonwood to come into Hesperia, and they gotta go down...
Westbound.
I'm sorry, westbound. So the folks heading westbound can no longer turn south at Mariposa. So conceivably, they'd have to turn south at Cottonwood, go down to Sequoia to travel west to get to Mariposa, if that was in fact their, their aim. My question is this, that's kind of a bend in the road if you're looking, and a bear, that would be a bear to get out on, um, so are we talking about, how do we deal with that? I mean, has that now become a three-way stop? Are we looking at a signal if this became permanent? Are we looking at a signal if this became permanent? And the other thing is, if you're taking Bear Valley east and you gotta make a left on Cottonwood to get to the businesses, conceivably in that little uh, island, um, they've gotta go Cottonwood to Monarch. They've gotta take Monarch to Mariposa and now they've gotta make a left there. And again, that's at a bend. And, and for those of you that try and get the steering sign, which is one of my favorites by the way, and you try and do that to avoid all the Bear Valley nonsense?
What are you doing?
Hey, come on, I gave up my secret. That, it's a nightmare to make a left there too because you're getting people coming around that bend, can't see...
You're right, that's gonna be...
That's gonna another, that's another unintended consequence.
It's gonna be a major accident point.
So, that's something else to take into consideration, folks. If we're gonna do that, we, we got two issues there. We got issues of Mariposa for Sequoia and Mariposa for Monarch. That's gotta be figured in.
The issue of Sequoia would be at Oakwood because Sequoia dead ends, it, it loops just uh, west of Oakwood.
See here?
Right.
You take Sequoia across Oakwood?
See, it doesn't go all the way through. That, that's, that's an old picture.
I see.
Alley.
Yeah.
It is. That's even worse there. That's even worse, how do you get to the, to that?
Yeah.
Now, you gotta go... How do you get back to those businesses?
Yeah, that, that, I mean, it's hard enough on the north side, but on the south side, you totally cut 'em off. So, you flat can't get to those, what is it, two hotels? One of which is brand-new. And, and it's like a three or four-star hotel.
You're right.
Oh, no, 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 you can turn right coming off the freeway.
Most of, most of the hotels...
But I'm just saying the westbound...
Most of the hotels...
The westbound people are gonna be screwed to try and get to that.
Most of the hotel traffic will come, uh...
Hotel traffic has to come right.
And they'll be making a right, they would be making a right-hand turn. But there are other businesses in there and there is a strip center on that, on that corner. You effectively kill that center from any, from any business from, that's going west. You kill it, cause they would have to take their life in their hands to come up to Mariposa and make a left onto uh, uh, into that strip center.
That's something we did look at, but obviously, we wanted to come and get concurrence first. There's a couple of different ways to get traffic over to Mariposa. Uh, you have, you, you have um, Eucalyptus, you have Sequoia to Oakwood. And so, that's something, again, we didn't settle on one direction. That's something that we would look at in this pilot project. Um, but at this point, they can get there. There's a couple of different ways you can get to Mariposa. Uh, as you, if, if you look at the traffic numbers, the left turning movements are not that great.
There's only 200 and 300 a day.
I mean, if, if the, the turning movements are really right turning movements, as, as you mentioned. So, we're not talking about a large volume of traffic that is turning left on to Cottonwood. Uh, or, you know, it's turning left right now onto, onto uh, Mariposa. So, again, we believe that's a manageable issue in this pilot project, but we will be looking at the best way to get them over to Mariposa for that amount of traffic that is going westbound.
And, and I've often mentioned to Mike that where Oakwood comes to Mariposa...
That's a nightmare.
We need to dead-end that Oakwood right there and not let it exit out on to Mariposa. Because, uh, no, it is, it's a nightmare, but...
I agree with you.
It is a nightmare, but then...
So, that's something...
There's no way to get to Mariposa.
You'd have to go up, you'd have to go up to Eucalyptus or come to, come to Oakwood and turn left.
We have some significant sales taxpayers on our side. Excuse us, this is uh, Hesperia, excuse me, Mr. and Mrs. Victorville. But uh, we have some significant sales taxpayers along there. We have the RV companies, we have the, the mobile home companies. Uh, and a lot of their market has to come...
Off the freeway or...
A lot of it's gonna be coming up from Apple Valley. And uh, we, these people are gonna get hurt and I'm not, I'm not enamored with this. I'm sorry, I don't care if you go two miles an hour if you can't get, if you can't generate revenue for my, and jobs in our community, I don't, you know. I know it's a problem, but I'm more interested in, in preserving some of the good things that we have from sales tax.
But I think the issue we have with that is, is the worse the road gets, the less people we're gonna have going to either side of it. They're gonna find other ways, they're gonna use Highway 18 if they can. Or they're gonna get off at Main and, and, and make that worse than what it is. And, and like I said before, I think once Ranch Arrow is, is started, the under, the underpass, and once we get our interchange on going and once Nisqually, um, a lot of our issues are gonna go away with Bear Valley.
Hey, one more question, the dollars and cents. Has the City of Hesperia figured out what it's gonna cost us for signing, stripe fees and any of this for this pilot program? Minimal 10 grand, 20 grand, minimal, so we can do that. But we gotta do it for eight weeks cause if we start getting inundated with businesses and we can pull the plug at four or six weeks, it gets that bad, or are we gonna go eight weeks and that's no left?
Yeah, we can pull anytime we want.
That's what I want, I would like to see it no more than...
So, we can pull the cork anytime, okay.
If, if we get a lot of complaints and, and I'm sure the City of Victorville will do the same, the study would stop.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of a business, a motel or Burger King, Carl's Jr., you'll see, 10% difference in their pay right now is huge in this economy.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and they're gonna know in a couple of weeks how it's gonna hit 'em. I keep seeing you shaking your head, you might have a business right there. 10% is my profit margin right now. You take that away from me, I might as well close the doors, folks.
It's not worth, it's not worth being in business, but I'd say, but it's all small.
You know, again, I don't represent Victorville, but I do business at your Staples over there cause I don't have one. Uh, I just, I do business at the, the little place that does Flauta Michaels. Uh, I've done business at Viarda. Uh, I guarantee you, and the mo- all your, you're gonna kill the motels that are over there on that side, on your side, which is good for us, but um...
Well, the equal's gonna happen though to the, to the hotels or motels on the south side. They're gonna need signing.
No, because...
No, they won't.
Because they get, they're gonna, we'll pick up revenue on the hotel.
Don't do it.
Alright, uh, okay, do we make two separate motions here? We're gonna make one big one here.
No, I think we believe need...
One big one.
One big one?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna make a...
I'm gonna let to the city clerks, I think it should be separate, but I don't know.
I'm gonna make a motion for the City of Hesperia that we go forward with the pilot program.
I will second that motion.
What's it gonna cost?
Very little.
Okay.
Huh? Very minimal.
How many weeks?
Well, I think we should shoot for eight and if we get a lot of problems, a lot of complaints...
Pull the cork.
Then we can pull the plug on it.
Whatever.
I mean, we won't know until it happens. We, we have to find out if, if, if it's doable for both of us.
Pilot program's a lot cheaper than a million.
I'll take all the time. They start calling you, give them my number.
Oh, I will.
And then I've got a saying on you.
You can count on that.
Do we have any motion from Victorville?
I'll make a motion that we uh, approve the uh, pilot program, project.
Second, I just forgot to say, I think if, if we don't test it, we're just sitting here speculating about what we think is gonna be the reaction. And I think we need to test it to find out.
Another good consultant to put another shelf, put, you know, some on the shelf, they're not here.
Individual votes, Mayor?
Yeah, let's do individual votes, uh, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Alright, so could someone tell me for Hesperia what that means? So, if it fails in Hesperia and passes in Victorville, nothing happens, okay? Uh, there's no other business before either council, so we are adjourned.